Planning Board meeting for Monday, August 10, 2015. We'd like to thank H-CAM for taping the meeting. We're down a couple of members and they might want to review what we did here today. The agenda today, the solar panel application will be continued to our next meeting. They did not get through Concom and they need another meeting with them. We have some approval not required and some other smaller items. And then we're going to be talking about the Hopkinton Center for the Arts, the site plan amendment we talked about before. A bunch of miscellaneous things, but I think it's a relatively quick night, hopefully. But we're here until the time. So, anyway, that's where we're at. Let me start with the continued public hearing for the Marathon Solar. Look for a request of vote, a motion to continue to the 24th at what time, Jennifer?
Um, 7:30 usually.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Further discussion, seeing none. How do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Motion carries. Do we need to file, ask for extension of time, too?
Yes, somewhat extended time.
Okay. Until... How about the 1st of...
Um, I think the 1st of August 31st.
Okay. Look for a motion to extend the time for the stormwater permit to the 31st of August, 2015.
So moved.
Moved, seconded. Further discussion, seeing none. How do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Motion carries. Okay. I think we're next on 102 Fruit Street, which is the land, or part of the land that the town bought. Okay. We've, uh, let's see. We're dividing it into four parcels. Lot, lot one gets conveyed to the town, which is, why don't you just kind of...
All this area.
All that area. Lot two is...
It's really lot 2A, 2B, 2C, which will be retained by the Pratt family.
Okay. And then, uh, and the other two little triangles are not building lots.
Correct.
Was there any reason why they were broken like that? I'm just curious.
Yes. The, during negotiations with the town, um, the town agreed to purchase lot one. And then the discussions turned to lot two. And the town requested, um, a little more land, to put it, um, simply. And, uh, the estate agreed to convey by gift lots 2B and 2C to the town in the event that any portion of lot two were to leave the Pratt family.
Okay. And lot three is to add on to Mary's lot?
Yeah, that was already done.
That was already done. We already did that. Okay. So that's, that's what we're doing tonight. Jennifer?
Yeah.
Does it meet all the requirements?
It does. Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
It's not really about statitability, I guess, but there was discussion about, um, some of that land being used for scout lodge. Was that to be on town land, or was that just...
Scout, um, the town has entered into an agreement with the Hopkinton Scout Leaders Association, Inc., uh, to, uh, I guess the best word is to host a one, an area, I think it's 1.6 acres, somewhere on lot one pursuant to a master plan, which will be created at a date sometime in the future. Prior to conveyance of lot one to the town, the estate will record a deed restriction, granting HSLA, um, that right. So the town will then, when the deed is given to the town, it'll be subject to the rights of HSLA in lot one.
Okay, so it'll be within the town part, not necessarily on its own.
Yes.
And so there will be further discussions, I assume, as to whether we put conservation restrictions or different things depending on...
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that the town would put conservation restrictions on its own property.
Okay. You want to open it up? Okay.
The, the, there's, uh, this, on the agenda, item for the selectmen tomorrow night is master planning for this property. So if you're interested, go to the selectman.
Ken, just to be clear, so lot one is what the town agreed to purchase.
Correct.
So we're just really talking about dividing off those two little triangles on lot two?
No. Um, the parcel as it stands now is everything except that little lot, which has already been sliced off. So the current lot is lot one, lot 2A, lot 2B, lot 2C. And this plan divides that one lot into one, two, three, four parcels.
And it is approval not required, so, but anyway, look for a motion to endorse. Are there any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Look for a motion to endorse the plan?
So moved. Second?
Moved and seconded. Further discussion, seeing none. How do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Motion carries. And we'll get the special pen and we need two signatures and a date and... I'll pass it down a little bit. Let me, is only one page?
Two.
There's two pages.
The second one's just the vicinity map.
Oh, okay.
Took a lot of space.
The second page as well.
Another pen? Why?
Well, I was going to pass this one.
You only need two signatures.
I think you only need two signatures.
Right? Okay. I think, I think they want the hard toffees, or a hard, one set, or two?
They can have the mild and we can hold it.
Okay. Have fun at the registry.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay. Uh, the next item up is Legacy Farms, uh, special permit, uh, 47, signal timing. We talked a little bit about it at our last meeting. Uh, the signal timing is actually, was due in July, but doing a traffic count in July doesn't make any sense. Um, so we talked about extending it to October. How about maybe like October 15th to give them time to write up a report and then way they can do it after the school's been in session for a couple of, couple of weeks?
I think directionally it's for consent.
Look for a motion to extend the time for master plan, special permit condition 14 to the 15th of October of this year.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion, seeing none. How do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Motion carries. Okay. Next one is Hayden Woods. Uh, I think they're really here for performance bond.
For the performance bond, yep.
Request, it's a reduction to 258,600, I believe?
Correct, yep. Based on, uh, together with the 20% contingency.
Okay. Any questions to the board members?
Yeah, I did have one question.
Okay.
Obviously Beta made some reductions here, it's favorable, correct, for you guys. What was the basis that Beta made those decisions to reduce some of those...
I think it was just some of the additional work that had been done. So we had, another week or 10 days had passed before, and Beta went back out again. So the contractors continued to let their working. That's correct.
Yep.
I think it just reduced some of these items by some small pieces.
If they, if they get it done, it doesn't matter to us. Okay. Uh, any further discussions? Okay, look for a motion to reduce the, uh, performance bond to 258,600 dollars.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion, seeing none. How do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Motion carries. Okay. Next one is Hayden Woods. Uh, I think they're really here for performance bond.
For the performance bond, yep.
Request, it's a reduction to 258,600, I believe?
Correct, yep. Based on, uh, together with the 20% contingency.
Okay. Any questions to the board members?
Yeah, I did have one question.
Okay.
Obviously Beta made some reductions here, it's favorable, correct, for you guys. What was the basis that Beta made those decisions to reduce some of those...
I think it was just some of the additional work that had been done. So we had, another week or 10 days had passed before, and Beta went back out again. So the contractors continued to let their working. That's correct.
Yep.
I think it just reduced some of these items by some small pieces.
Yeah. If they, if they get it done, it doesn't matter to us. Okay. Uh, any further discussions? Okay, look for a motion to reduce the, uh, performance bond to 258,600 dollars.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion, seeing none. How do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Motion carries. Next item on that is, I guess there's some, we got a, a letter requesting to change the name to Davenport, which kind of takes the etched in stone and kind of makes it a little bit easier.
Little bit.
Uh, we have a, I thought we had a draft letter somewhere to the board of selectmen supporting that. Does anyone have a problem with, you know, normally we don't weigh in on the names and names, but quite frankly, it makes it a lot easier for them. Elaine was happier, I believe, because we have two street names that are...
I think it was a paper street. Buckland Street or something like that. A little paper road, something like that.
Claire?
Um, yeah. I certainly support changing it from Buckland to Davenport because, you know, they're already being, uh, paper streets. But, um, first of all, they're still going to have to put up the standard green street sign.
Yes.
Because Davenport Lane. The way things stand right now, this stone is not going to say Davenport Lane. It's still going to say Davenport. So it's very clear to everybody that this was a development sign that got put up, which is what we, you know, don't allow. And, um, you know, the message gets sent that that's the way you do it if you want to. You do what you want and you ask questions later. Unless it says Davenport Lane, it's not, it's not going to look like a street sign. It looks like a development name, which is right back to where the problem started. If they want to take that stone out and flip it around to the blank face on the other side, or re-carve it with Davenport Lane, but as long as it just says Davenport, everybody going by is going to know what that is. It's a development name. Doesn't, it doesn't make it any better, in my opinion.
As long as there's a standard street sign there that says Davenport Lane, I'm oka, I'm okay, personally okay with the sign saying Davenport. I, I don't necessarily need, see the need for it to say Lane on it. We'll have the street sign that says Lane.
At least I think the confusion, which was the public safety aspect, has kind of gone away.
I agree with Claire. Um, I think at the last meeting, we didn't say change the name to Buckland. We said to Buckland Street. And I think to send a consistent message, having the lane name, uh, is consistent with what we voted on last time and consistent with what we've said before. And I also agree with Claire, it sends the wrong message that, kind of do what you want and come back and ask permission later. Uh, it just sends, I think, the wrong message in.
I mean, that's what we talked about at the last meeting.
Yep.
And we agreed to it at the last meeting, so, you know, I'm going to agree with Claire and Don.
I mean, there wasn't any ill will with the, you know, the way the sign was, you know, instilled. I think that, you know, as though the wall went up, you know, we talked about it internally, about, you know, trying to get something granted to make it look nice, so I don't, again, I don't think it was, uh, you know...
You know, if I might add, with all due respect, I don't think anyone ever comes before this board and says, "Yeah, we intended ill will. We were trying to squeeze something through." That's always the answer. Um, frankly, the best way to send the message that this should not happen again is to make it be corrected and to stick by what this board has approved. It was not approved. And what we voted at the last meeting was to change it, to put a street name, make Buckland Street or Davenport Street, but not just to leave what looks like a development everybody's drawing by.
Is it written somewhere, or is it just customary practice?
I'd have to remember back from our discussions like, two weeks ago. Kobe, do you remember?
Is this practice documented somewhere? That we don't label, that we don't name labels?
You know, Brian, if you wanted to look...
I think it's just that we don't do it anymore.
If you wanted to look through the minutes of the last 15 years, for every development that's come up, that's proposed to have a permanent development name, you can read that the board said, "We don't do that. We don't like that done. We don't want to create encrees. We don't want to create safety confusion." Um, and so it's not written as a law, but if somebody wanted to read the 15 years' worth of minutes, you'd see it's been consistent.
Yeah, with Legacy Farms, too.
Legacy Farms. I mean, Legacy Farms, 940 units, and it's good enough for legacy.
Okay. It sounds like we're looking for the word "lane" to be added to the sign. I think that's kind of the consensus of, of board members.
Or if they choose to just not.
That's the other option.
Take it out and have blank.
It's, okay. And we're willing to support the, by sending a letter to the selectmen to street name change?
Not the letter that you have written.
The change is to...
That's if they choose to, if they want to rename it Davenport Lane. They change the sign and change the carving.
So then is it in their court, unless they want to just remove it and put the stone in there, or...
It's up to them. They have that, that option.
Okay, we'll, I guess, figure it out. Makes the, I guess, the most sense. Because I think if it says Davenport Lane, it's still, I think you need to keep the size, so I think we need to have a lettering. Sort of have to, you know, take out some more of the, the stone and get a bigger piece of granite, I think, to get, you know, to make it look...
Right.
The way it...
Keep the same font, right?
Right, to keep it.
Okay.
So I would make a motion that the developer, Hayden Woods, had the option to either remove the existing Davenport sign and replace it with a blank face, or re-letter it to state Davenport Lane.
Okay.
But the existing sign needs to be removed.
Or, or it could say Buckland Lane, if that's what they said, too. Because right now, it's currently Buckland Lane.
So you're just geared towards getting the, the full street name and...
Or no name, or no street name, or just have a stone.
But I, I think that the, um, we should support the change from Buckland to Davenport because it's confusing. If there's another street, even paper, that's probably better.
Okay. So let's, Claire had a motion. Did, did that get seconded?
Did you get it?
Got seconded. So basically, that takes the major subject. So, more discussion? Everyone ready for a vote on Claire's motion?
Can she just repeat what is actually on the table?
So should we, should we, well...
Kobe can read it back here.
Let's see if I can read my own one.
Yes.
The developer, Hayden Woods, either remove Davenport sign, or re, uh, letter it with, or leave a blank, or re-letter it to state Davenport Lane. Correct. And then Brian said, "What about Buckland?" Or leave a blank.
Okay.
I, I could add to that, that we recommend to the selectmen that it be changed to Davenport Street.
We will do that separately.
Do it separately?
We'll do that separately. Okay, so we got Claire's motion on there, which is to, to fix the sign. Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Anyone abstain? Motion carries. Okay. So now Claire, you're on a roll here. How about, uh, write a letter to support the change of the name?
Okay, I move that the board send a letter to the selectmen recommending the street name be changed from Buckland Lane to Davenport Lane to remove confusion. Um, oh, just period, period.
Yep.
No. I mean, we can explain if we want in the letter why, but...
Okay. Okay. Motion's been seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none. How do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Motion carries. And I guess we'll have to rework on the letter early tomorrow morning. It's not going to be much. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, have you had an opportunity to take a look at the, uh, the, the bond, I guess, the tri-party agreement itself?
No.
Was that...
The lane and the street, and you'll hear back from you, so I have a copy of it.
Yeah. She had made, um, she had sent us one that the town had used, and then she, I guess, had read through it and said, she made one or two changes, which we then made and sent it back to her. And she said, "Okay, I'm going to send this to the board to review, and then if they vote on it," she put the number, the 586, in there. So I didn't know what the process was to, or to, excuse me, 258,6. So I didn't know what the process was, or how you...
Do we need to sign that one?
Well, the problem is if you view it, I, I have it with me, but, just only if you wanted to, you know, I didn't know that you hadn't seen it.
You must have missed me.
Yeah, between, obviously, the bank and town and us.
Elaine was happy with it, Kobe, right? After the...
She didn't have any further comments? Just said, "It's okay to discuss it at this time, then make copies." But so I have it, but I...
She actually produced it, um, produced a document for us. She sent to us and changed the, uh, the addresses of ownership and added it.
Okay. Okay. I think this is the typical security bond that we kind of go for. Uh, motion to, uh, sign the, uh, performance security agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none. How do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Motion carries. Okay. So, which one do you want us to sign? You've got one that you want us to sign there? And I think this requires just about everyone to sign.
I think it does, yeah.
This is lot two, gave me, gave me, and then there's some things to fill out. It would have to be in pen solid, or in pen, so this must be, I certainly hope this is the same one.
It, it is the same one, yeah. It is.
What, what did you say that needed to be filled out?
I think just when it gets recorded, um, here.
Oh.
I think that just needs to, that just needs to be filled out.
Sure.
The time of recording and the outside of that. Uh, the amount is actually listed, the date up there.
Okay.
The signature, the planning board, that just needs to be, um, filled out.
Here. I'm going to take the... Just put it to the signature page. Did we vote to sign? Yes, we did, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Can you take it with you tonight, or...
I can come get it tomorrow, so...
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I've got it. I do.
Okay. Okay, it looks like we're all set. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, I think it's eight o'clock, or just about. Let's put it that way. It's three more minutes. Let's do one thing before that. Christian Estates, do we know what lot needs to be released? 3B? And we have a bond for that, so the motion would be to release lot 3B of Christian Estates.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
Second. Further discussion? Seeing none. How do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Motion carries. Then we'll be probably very close to eight o'clock here. We got time for one more? Let me talk quickly for two minutes about Cumberland Farms. 91 West Main Street. I met with a consultant, Beta, uh, out at the site. We talked about it. We talked about the various areas that might be needed. And we came to the conclusion that if we got a triangle of land that's 12 feet, this could be a right triangle, 12 feet by about 65 feet, and that 65 feet is off of the assessors, or off of our GIS map, and that corner of the triangle on 65 would be, uh, the right triangle is at the property line with, um, with the golden spoon, matches up with their 12-foot easement. And then 65 feet gets us to, I'll say, the western edge of the eastern driveway at Cumberland Farms. So that's basically right where the radius of, for that parking lot, we would start the lane. And so that's about 390 square feet, all subject to survey, et cetera. Uh, we then met the next day with the two representatives of Cumberland Farms. Uh, they seemed pretty amenable to that. Uh, we didn't talk whether it'd be a full gift or whatever, but the conclusion was that the town should go and do the engineering to set up an easement plan and also do some, uh, survey work to make sure that it physically can, it's more of a elevation, whether it works or not. line with, with the golden spoon matches up with their 12-foot easement, and then 65 feet gets us to, I'll say, the western edge of the eastern driveway at Cumberland Farms. So, basically, right where the radius for that parking lot, we would start the lane. And so that's about 390 square feet, all subject to survey, et cetera. We then met the next day with the two representatives of Cumberland Farms. They seemed pretty amenable to that. We didn't talk whether it'd be a full gift or whatever, but the conclusion was that the town should go and do the engineering to set up an easement plan, and also do some survey work to make sure that it physically can, it's more of an elevation, whether it works or not. With maybe a goal of trying to get that for the special town meeting as hopefully a gift of land. But basically, we're doing all the, all the engineering to get it done. So, I'll be working with Elaine to try to put together a scope of work to see about getting that done. Planning Board has a few funds that we could use for engineering, and then also, in August, I believe, we will be getting the money from Paul's Development that might be used for that, too. So, I'm not sure it's a big, it's gonna be a big deal, per se, but we'll put together a scope of work for, for that effort. Maybe a phase two, which is to do the overall design, that's my sense. And, you know, one guy starts it and then finishes it.
Is the hope to do some of the engineering work in September? September, October?
Yes, yes. And with possibly maybe construction next summer or so, when the news is going to be doing all their work. So they would kind of open up with them. I don't know if you've been by the Starbucks area?
Yep.
There's a little bit more of a mound than I originally had thought along there, so we might have to do a one-foot retaining area, or slope it a little bit more in berm, but it's starting to look pretty good, I think.
Absolutely.
So, anyway, that's kind of the update. Any further questions on that? Just wanted to make sure everyone is kind of aware of what's going on. Okay, it is now, for sure, eight o'clock, even on the clock here. So, let's talk about 98 Hayden Row, the Alkington Center for the Arts. I think it's Chuck and Dan. As we talked last time, we felt that we needed to send out letters to the neighborhood, which we did. And I see a few neighbors here, so I guess the letters were received, so that's, yes, that's good. So, anyway, why don't you kind of go through with the board again, the changes, and so we're all kind of talking the same thing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think we determined that the last meeting, this is, can be done at administrative level, and does not require, I'll say, a formal hearing.
Chris Waldman, one of the directors of the ACA, everybody knows Dan, he's in charge. I'm along his window dressing, so I'll let him take over.
I think you're promoted, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the whole idea here was to try to get a few more parking spots for the use up there. They are getting a lot of activity from the, from the construction, a lot of new people want to join and take the classes up there, so really scratching for a few extra spaces. So, when we came last time, we had this auxiliary parking lot, we added some spaces facing Hayden Row. We did hear from, you sent out the names, we did hear from the neighbors, and we took that into consideration, and we revised the proposal to eliminate the parking heading into Hayden Row.
Okay.
But we still wanted to pick up a few spaces. So, we did extend the parking down facing Alkington Road to the Loop Road. Kept a minimum of 14 feet, mostly 28 feet, to keep the same landscaping that we had in there. We had a landscaper in there before, we're gonna keep that there. We are gonna pick up two spots right next to the existing garage, and those are gonna be reserved spots. There'll be signs there for the executive director and the artistic director. So we'll have basically employee parking right there that's committed to that, so they're not taking spaces that would otherwise be used by clients. And the other option we looked at was, we wanted to try to get more parking in the main parking lot, and what was hindering that was the handicap space calculation. Because we had to base that on the entire shared parking agreement, about 150 spaces. Although, on a daily basis, there's no need for that many handicapped parking for, for a lot that has about 40 spaces. But we couldn't really wait to get around that, but what we wanted to do was move, we had five handicap spots right here by the main entrance, we wanted to reduce that down to three, put two over here with a, with a walkway coming right up to there, and that would, that would give us an additional three spaces in here. So we end up with about 43 total spaces, where before we had 43.
You end up with how many?
Picked up, picked up two, five, six, seven.
So, it's a plus seven.
It's a plus seven, right.
You were permitted for 33?
Yeah.
So now you've got a total of a-
I think we got 43.
So you picked up 10?
If I counted right.
Yeah, I don't think we picked up 10, though.
I guess I'm not in charge anymore.
Yeah.
I think what we, the point of what we're trying to do here, though, is, is, one of the things that became clear to us is, the formula for the handicap spaces was based on the high school parking lot as well, because although they have their handicap spaces accounted for, they're all down by the high school, so they're not gonna service anything here. So, by putting it here, we believe this door also, and we're gonna determine this, is also handicap accessible, so they could come right here. In all likelihood, during the time when this lot is gonna be used only, these are more than sufficient, and it opens up some easy spaces up front for us here as well.
This building's handicap accessible, isn't it?
Yes, right through here.
So, so those are logical to be there, too?
Sure, that's right.
Yeah.
That's right. So, it, what we really tried to do was to listen to the neighbors, take into consideration what their concerns were, try to reach a compromise situation where we could pick up a few parking spots without facing out towards Hayden Row Street, and I think Dan did a wonderful job. I really think he did. He was very creative in how he went about doing this, and it all fits.
Questions for the board, and then we'll get to neighborhoods.
Yeah, I'm just a little confused. The new spaces are along the Loop Road, I don't have the old plan to compare it to, so which ones are the new ones, Dan? Are they all new, or how many?
These two.
How many was the new? Oh, just two? Okay, so count out for me again where all the new spaces. You've got two on the side, the two by the garage.
Yeah, we got two here, we got two here.
Two, four.
Picked up three here.
And we picked up, actually, I think we picked up five here for some reason.
Okay, but they're, they're all along, basically, they're all along the Loop Road.
They're on the Loop Road, yeah.
So, you had parking on the Loop Road anyway.
Right.
You just put a few more in.
Oh, yeah. Exactly.
And so the only real newly created area is those two on either side of the garage. Oh, yeah, and my other question, Chuck, those two handicap ones, those new ones, do those empty out onto, I mean, I see sidewalk on the side, does the further one empty out onto a sidewalk where someone could easily-
Well, this is gonna be paved right here, because this is our dumpster here.
Yeah.
So this is paved right to here. So they get out this side.
Yeah.
Because this is the loading, unloading dock.
Right, right.
All right, and then this is all paved, so they can go right onto the sidewalk.
Oh, okay.
Or, in, in reality, they're probably gonna go this way.
Okay, but, but it puts them onto a logical-
Right. It also serves the function of getting two handicap spaces close to this. We're not giving up use of this.
Right.
It's just gonna be used differently.
Right, no, I just couldn't see the sidewalk that spot went out onto, and also, um-
Is this concrete pad all the way here? Or not?
Yeah, this, this line is the concrete pad. I think, I think to Claire's point, we should probably, you know, put some sort of sidewalk in back there, so they can come down this aisle way here and go either direction if they choose to do that.
Instead of going through the parking lot.
Instead of going through the parking lot, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the new dumpster site, it's still gonna have an enclosure.
Yes.
Right, it's just removed, and so that's gonna be not, where was the old one? Where was the old spot?
Over here.
Right at the-
Okay, so that's actually maybe even a little less visible?
Oh, yeah.
Because it's behind the building.
Yeah.
And there's enough room for the truck to get in with the handicap spots?
Yeah.
Actually, it's better over there.
I have one question, Chuck. On the calculation for the handicap spots?
Yes.
You talked about adding the 150 from the school.
Mm-hmm.
Right, is that required to do that, by law, or what?
Well, my understanding is, and Danny can speak this a little better than I can, is that I think if we use just our parking lot, we'd only be required to have two.
Right.
Okay.
But on event, we have a cross-parking agreement with the high school.
That's why you have to include a total calculation.
Right, so on an event night, all right, they're not all gonna fit here. This is a lighted walkway. This is gonna be main parking. We still have to be able to count for five handicap spots.
I think we could use the school's handicap spot to kind of meet the letter of the law, the spirit of the law.
Yeah, because it's so far over there.
Exactly.
To that point, I seem to recall, when we were looking at the site plan, does anybody else remember this discussion that we talked about on event night, you doing, if it's allowed, like a temporary, like you could put, you know, when it's a big thing, you could put some on, because sort of, if you had a lot of people, you shouldn't have more handicaps, you don't wanna take it up all the time, with the temporary thing.
We did, we did discuss that, Claire, and we can do that right here. And these could have temporary handicap signs that go in on event nights.
Exactly.
So, I don't know if you have to paint it blue, I don't know what that regulation is, but we'll figure that part out.
Bucket and sign.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that's what it ends up being, yeah.
It works.
But you have, to that point, you have no rights to make any temporary parking, handicap parking here.
That would open up a negotiation with the school. They are tight with student parking.
Yeah.
They're tight. So, we, we went that road, we went down a bunch of roads, all right, and we thought, well, then we're gonna have to give them two student parking spaces over here during the day. It got really complicated, we said, let's, let's just get them right here.
I guess I was just thinking the events are off, during off-school hours.
That's correct. That's correct.
That's why I was asking.
But I mean, we could do the same thing Claire's talking about, we could make these kind of temporary handicaps that only go up on event nights.
Right, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
Yeah.
If, if, if that's what your experience is, in whatever events you're doing, and you start to see that, maybe-
We could always approach, they've been great, they've been terrific to work with.
I mean, I don't think anyone in the school, or whatever, if you have a problem not having enough handicapped parking, anyone's gonna say no to that one.
That's a tough one. But I think, I think Dan did a really, really good job of making it work on the site right now, self-contained.
I have a question, there's something that we did discuss when you came to us originally over long ago, that was, when this parking down here fills up, how do you prevent people from, I mean, people come down, they're gonna find out it's, it's filled.
Right.
But other people will come behind them.
Right.
How, what was the, what was the solution to that?
We did incorporate this turnaround here, all right?
But that's not big enough to make a-
We could extend this more square, if you know what I mean? The thing we're fighting is we've got a grade here.
Right, no, I know the grade.
So we'd have to build something up to make that quote-unquote turnaround, you know?
But that, that's, that's a problem inherent with kind of dead-end parking lots like this.
Right. But the way we've got it designed is, a lot of the, this is the school, this is the performance center, all right? All the classes occur, most of the classes occur over here and here. Parents coming in here, dropping off, that's their circle and their outlet, all right? Parents coming in here, that's their circle and outlet. So it's, it's pretty well designed, you know, for, for the functions that are gonna occur here.
And my recollection was the reason you couldn't put an exit out onto the school driveway was, there was a grade or something?
It was a pretty steep grade there.
Yeah, it's a real steep grade.
And then we dump out, right, kind of the intersection.
You gotta make a mess of that intersection.
It's a shame you can't have a, have a, an express to keep that bond away from that way. Well.
They always, they always have the handicap spots to turn around, except probably gonna be-
Yeah, those are gonna be, yeah.
Okay, further questions from the board? Okay, neighbors.
Could we take a look?
Come on up here.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. I wanted to see the revised plan.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Dan, for the changes to the name. So, these were the spaces that were originally, in the original plan from 2013?
Seven, seven, I think we had two.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And you've eliminated the additional spots along this road, and then these were the two for the director and executive director?
This one and this one.
Oh, okay, on either side, the grounds, please. And I think in the original plan, I don't, I didn't bring a copy with me, but there was a lot of landscaping along here.
That's correct.
And I don't see that in this drawing.
This was just to illustrate the parking space, since it wasn't to amend the landscaping.
Okay, so the landscaping plan stays as it was, originals? There'll be some, I'm not sure with the-
Oh, by the way, name and, name and address.
Janine Hagan, 105 Hayden Row, pardon me.
Oh, you made it?
Yes.
Good.
Yes, I did. Had my dates confused.
Oh, okay.
Landscaping issue, Elaine's memo, she mentioned that there was gonna be discussion of ad planting along Hayden Row.
Well, that was before we saw this-
That was when I added the parking spaces.
No, this is the memo for tonight.
I, Claire, I had asked Elaine to, after we received Janine's letter, I said, "Talk to Danny about maybe making a berm or something to try to fix it." He fixed it in another way.
I see, okay, so that, so this, this is-
So, last question was, there's landscaping that I can't see in this plan.
There is landscaping.
Rhododendrons, is that what was mentioned?
I'm gonna say ink something.
Yeah, I don't have any landscape plan with, but, yeah, we built, it was a, it was kind of a berm, a couple of rhododendrons, I think some ink berries or something like that.
Nice. All right, that's definitely an improvement.
Done.
Yep, and then you put some of the spots down here. These are additional on the other side of this?
No.
No. I heard you-
We picked up, we picked up three spots here, where there used to be handicaps, those two.
The silos.
Okay, great, thank you. That works.
That works?
Yeah, it works.
Yeah, thanks very much.
That's good. If we make people happy, that's, that's really, that works well. Any other public comments?
I'm a neighbor, 108 Hayden Row, Paul DeVona.
Paul.
I'd like to see, the transformer has been added on Hayden Row on the north side of-
Right in here, I think.
As, as the condition of the permanent, I believe it requires to be screened, so I'd like to see that addressed, and we've talked, Chuck and-
You can, we'd like to see as much as you can do, and I know, unfortunately, Eversource restricts a lot of it.
Yes.
But, you know-
We talked about shrubbery versus a fence with a gate, because they have to get access to that transformer. So we'll, we're more than happy to talk to them about what their requirements are. I don't understand what their requirements are right yet, but soon as they do, we'll, we'll-
There is, I know there's an access so that a guy can step back on it, but if you put the shrubs out far enough, you're kind of okay.
Yeah, we, we just gotta be careful, we'll get too close to the sidewalk.
They have the doors facing the sidewalk, that they have to open up and work from that.
Well, I think if, if you get, if you get it so that you don't see it as much when you're going down the street, meaning you put them on the north side of it, and maybe one or two on the south side, so you don't see it, I mean, the doors, you've gotta keep, yeah, kind of open, yeah.
But we had this discussion about mastriani's problem.
We have it every time.
And, and I asked if where those doors could be located could move, like, do they have to open on the Hayden Row side, could they open on the back side? And he said they could, that they don't have to open onto Hayden Row. What we talked about was maybe a little access walkway around, and then screening, so that the individual could, that had to service it, could go around to the back and open it to the back of the site, but the street side is still is screened with a shrub, and there's a little, just a little cement, you know, pathway around, so that what you see is, is the shrubs, and the, and the door opening happens on the back.
It's really too late for that, because it's been situated-
Right, it's set originally.
Yeah, and I'm sure it's all wired in and everything else, so, I mean, you can't, you can't flip it at this point.
Hard wire.
Hard wires.
Happy voting.
And, you know, the other, the other thing that most landlords do is they just screen it after it's done, and, you know, in, in 20 years, when you gotta pull it out, they'll come out with, with, with the saw, right?
Yes, they have to do it, they'll, yes.
I mean, it's, I mean, but I, I think something to kind of help, I mean-
I do, I do have another comment, and it's not-
Sure, okay, go ahead.
Really from, for the proponents as much as for the town, town-wide. This Loop Road is an interesting road in terms of pedestrian traffic, and believe it or not, more people walk in the street than they do on the sidewalk on the Loop Road. That's because the school really hasn't done a good job of maintaining the Loop Road sidewalk. So I would like to see the town jump in and create a sidewalk on this side where there's room on the Loop Road, that would benefit certainly the cultural arts, but also benefit those that come from the school and the access of parking from the school on the Loop Road. or not, more people walk in the street than they do on the sidewalk on the loop road. That's because the school really hasn't done a good job of maintaining the loop road sidewalk. So, I would like to see the town jump in and, and create a sidewalk on this side where there's room on the loop road that would benefit certainly the cultural arts center, but also benefit those that come from the school and the access of parking from the school on the loop road. It's, it's a very dangerous intersection, very dangerous. The other problem we have is this stone wall, it is the Hopkins School Road sign, it says Hopkins School, and there's a sign here that tells people where to go to the athletic fields, and a sign that tells people where to go to Hopkins. And I think as this becomes more developed in its present state, it's even more confusing than it was prior to the farmhouse being changed over, so that people from the south really don't see these signs. They're, they're dangerous signs, they're not very visible from the street, and we have a lot of turnaround traffic, and a lot of traffic that goes in and out of roads, and they didn't need to go to that destination. So, I've talked to Chuck about perhaps discussing with DPW and the school department about either moving those signs over onto exclusive school property, and maybe having John Westling in the DPW do some work on sidewalks. And these side, this sidewalk here is in pitiful shape on Hayden Row. Heavy sand, salt, and snowplow has pitted the whole surface of the walkway. It's very dangerous for, for women that wheel baby carriages through, it needs some resurfacing, and particularly at the crosswalk that's, has an LED PV panel to allow pedestrians to cross over. That's the low point of the sidewalk, and in the winter, it constantly ponds water and is in fact an icy surface in two months of the year certainly. So, my concern as a neighbor who lives right here is that we don't get a lot in terms of maintenance of these facilities. And as a matter of fact, this fence which was put when the Hopkins School was constructed, was a beautiful fence, and then it started to fall over, and they've simply put steel posts in to maintain its vertical support, but there's a huge area, about three fence lengths in length, that have actually, the soil has expanded and the fences, it's just, it's just a mess, it needs some work, so, and the landscaping, of course, but that's related to the school. I think a first-class facility like this will only improve the environment and the landscaping here, and hopefully it'll rub off on the school in terms of maintenance.
Dan, what, how are the grades for a sidewalk along the loop road in front of the facility?
I think it would work.
It would work?
Yeah.
Okay.
The sidewalk ends right here, the public sidewalk.
I don't know if we have enough space for, I think the sidewalk could be right on the curb, I don't know if we have space for real space between the sidewalk and the road.
We might want to suggest to, to John that that might be a, a spot for some of the sidewalk money.
Definitely.
Yeah, and, and to Mr. Debona's point, I mean, I assume that you kind of assumed that most of your auxiliary parking would happen over in here, and they'd go over there, but if anybody were to park over here, they're going to just run up this, go up, you're going to have a little mud, mud track up the hill to get it, they're not going to go all the way around here, they're going to cut up there. And I don't know whether the slope is so steep that you couldn't really do any little path down, but if you did have a sidewalk along there, at least it would give people that, anybody that parked over here, an access point to get on that sidewalk and go up to the front, because you're going to have people trying to go up that hill, you have a little, little path beaten into the, into the mud over time. I don't mean to redesign your site now, because we...
Nah, it's just money, Claire, it's just money, man, that's all it is.
Just see these things, I mean...
No, you're, you're right, I mean...
People go where path least resistance, you know?
I think one of our original plans had that, that is, shared parking area, and we, we actually designed a, a set of stairs going up that slope, but it, it just got too complicated.
Just made more sense to go where there was an even walkway right out to the...
Go down and do it.
Just to...
But there, a sidewalk would at least give you a point.
We're more than happy to work with the town and the school, because there's jurisdiction issues in, you know.
Sure.
We'd be more than happy to work with both, both entities to make whatever works.
See if we get the DPW to do something, if they get a little pull down.
There you go.
I, for one, Dan, really appreciate what you did, because I was very concerned about those cars, and I drove down Hayden Row and saw what the visual impact was, which was total, did not fit with all the rest of Hayden Row, which is lawns and yards and flowerbeds and green space and trees, and all of a sudden you saw...
With the cars and parking lots.
And driver, yeah, and driveways.
And, so, I, I'm very grateful.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, anyone from the public? Okay, seeing none, I think we are to the point of approving the site plan amendment, and... Does the landscape plan have to change along with this?
Yeah, I'm going to update the landscape plan with the new curb layout, so, I'll get, I'll get final site plan and landscape plan up to Elaine, but I can leave these copies for the record for now, if you'd like.
Yes, go ahead.
Would the final landscape plan be sent to the others through an email attachment, or?
I don't see...
We'd have to do a regular mail, I think, I don't think we had anybody...
Regular mail, yeah.
Adjustment to the landscape plan, you're not taking any, any landscaping away?
Not taking any away, no.
It's hard for us to approve something that we don't have in front of us. Where are you in your timing for the parking lot changes, once construction needed to be done?
We want to pave these pretty soon.
Pretty soon, meaning the next two weeks, or three weeks, or four weeks?
We wouldn't pave it in two weeks, we'll be, we need this for our final bids.
Okay.
Is there a condition, I mean, perfectly conditioned, that they return to board for approval of the landscape plan?
Technically not.
It's a tie.
I mean, I mean, it's, I don't know how we should, we really need, should have both of them to approve as a form of vote.
If we know that you're in principle, if we're in agreement with this...
We're comfortable with this, create your bid doc.
...the landscaping plan, and we can wait the two weeks, we'll just go out to bid with this.
Sure.
And we'll just wait for...
It'll take you two weeks to get your bids, and you'll have everything all set.
Exactly.
Will that work?
It works.
Okay, that won't get us in trouble with the, the process.
I understand. Okay, do we, do you want these again?
Yeah, we'll need something to put in the record.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you need time, do you need time to put them on?
What? No, there won't be a continuation, we'll just put them on, and it'll be a very short one.
Okay.
I mean, thank you, thank you for the comments.
Dan, Dan. Thank you.
Okay, geez, we're almost right on schedule again, 8:30, this is the discussion of, of 79, 81, and 83 Hayden Row, this is a proposed zoning change. Wayne, come on down, I think.
Mr. Chairman, can we, do you have another matter to deal with here?
Sure.
I'm waiting for...
Absolutely. Okay, we've got a couple more things that we can work on. Let's see, let's, let's start with some of the easy ones first. We've received a letter from the Mass Pike. I think you all got a copy of, of it. Looks like they're going to automatic tolls in there. The sketch that I got, I couldn't read it really well, I don't know whether anyone else could, but they're asking for planning board comments to, basically removing a lot of cement and pavement and going to automatic tolls, and I guess, the questions I had for them would be, is, it looks like there's some parking remaining, and is that public parking, or is that just for people working on that, or whatever? It looked like they were keeping a parking lot with 20-something spots, which didn't seem to make a lot of sense to me, and if it was, you know, I, I just don't understand that from, from the plan. Second wall is what kind of speed was going through this, this thing, because, you know, they now can do those tags at, you know, lots of miles an hour, but I bet you they'll bring it down to the exit speed with...
15?
Maybe they'll be doing 15, but I bet you they can do it at 30 or something.
It said highway speeds, Mr. Chairman.
Highway speeds?
Yeah, and they also said that those, that those devices that are going to be on the gantry can, can read at 120 miles an hour.
Yeah, oh, they can, I mean, but they won't make it through there at 120 miles an hour, but...
Right, municipal thing, so an exit ramp, I mean, it's, it's an exit entrance ramp, it's not...
That's right.
Sure, does it say highway speeds on there? I read some, there was a...
And then, and then they're talking about, I was not questioning whether they had a building that was remaining, or whether it was all coming out. So, I would suggest that maybe we draft a letter back to them, because they did request it, with kind of more questions than answers, but, you know, I don't think we have anything to say much whether or not, you know, if they're changing the tolls, they're changing the toll, I mean...
That's right.
Most people, I think, that use the Mass Pike all have the tags, and I believe, if you don't, they take it there, they read the plates and send you a bill. Okay, so, any, did anyone else have any other questions? Did anyone have a problem with the chairman putting together a letter, kind of asking questions?
No, I thought that was a good point about it, why do they still need all those parking spaces, that was a very good point.
Okay, I mean, but we'll just kind of keep the dialogue going, I guess, is where it is, but I, you know, I don't see this really coming much before we move this board for that aspect of it. Okay, so, you're all set now? Okay, Wayne. Come on down and introduce everyone.
Have a seat. Down here, give you a few of the seats. So, my name's Wayne Davies, and Ken Labt, and Phil Antoniades, Barbara Kessler. And, Mr. Chairman, we're here to, to talk about a potential rezoning of 79, 81, and 83 Hayden Row Street. This property sits on the, actually butts the business zone, and Hockington Pediatric Dental is the property that would be the furthest north on Hayden Row to be rezoned. This would unify a little island of, of rezoning for business. There's also a, the gas station site that's in the middle, which is also a business zone, and they would provide opportunities for these properties in the future. I think it's, it's pretty self-explanatory when you look at the, when you consider the location of the property and the uses there on the property. I'm assuming you're all familiar of where, where these properties are?
I think most members of this board have heard something on the Pediatric Dental property for one of their expansions, and, I think I've heard two now.
Right, so, the, this is a non-conforming use that is allowed by variance, and as you know, any time that you have a change in a, in a non-conforming use, you need to go back to the Board of Appeals and request approval for that. By making this use conforming, it will free up the ability of the owners to, to make minor changes to their property, and it'll also free up the time for the, for the, for the Board of Appeals not continually to hear this. It is a goal of zoning, as you know, to make the uses conforming to the zoning district in which they're, they're located. So, I think this is in the best interest of both the town and, you know, the owner, to make that conforming. Attached to the letter that I, I sent to you, there is a little diagram as to both the properties, and I highlighted, at least you would have it in the original, highlighted the area of the business district. If there is a special town meeting scheduled for September, we would like to have this considered at the special town meeting.
I don't think it's coming up in September, if it's coming up, but I'm not sure. I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm here, I'm here in November lately, but...
Well... Yeah.
I mean...
I mean, let me put it this way, the next, the next town meeting, whether it be special or, or hopefully not, we don't have to wait until the May town meeting.
The planning board as the sponsors have been not pushing to put things on special town meetings, out of tradition rather than anything else. And what we told people last week on a similar request was that if it's a citizen's petition, we will respond to that, and that's, you know, we'll, we'll work with that.
Okay.
But, but normally we would go, and Zach will hold a public hearing real quick, we'll have to hold a public hearing real quick. So, the real question is whether the selectmen call it with a two-week...
Right, notice.
Notice, and basically they make it really tough. I mean, from what I'm hearing from selectmen is they're, they've got to do some spending that was cut out because of the free cash debacle.
Right.
And then the rest is supposed to be highlighting the school.
Right. Well, I think our purpose tonight is to, is to present the idea to the board and, you know, get your initial thoughts. I know that, that you're going to listen to the recommendations of Zach, and take those into consideration, but we wanted to present this idea, put it on the table, and, and start the discussion process. We think it's a good idea.
Have you talked to your neighbors?
He's right here, and he's, he's in favor of it.
You're, what?
81 and 83.
Oh, you're in the middle of them.
I'm in the middle of them, yeah.
It's part of it, okay.
Yeah.
What about the neighbor to the north, 77?
Um, we, I'm sorry, to the north would be up the street.
77, I'm on the other side.
Yeah. I think there might have been some preliminary discussions with, with that neighbor, certainly if the planning board thinks that this is something that we ought to, you know, consider and move forward on, and we'll look favorably on this, we would have greater discussions with, with the entire neighborhood.
I mean, that's what's going to sell it, I mean, you get two or three neighbors there that are saying, no way, I mean...
Right, but I mean, the, the reality is, is that this is a business, it's a, it's a, it has a variance which runs with the land, so that business use is going to be there forever.
Sure.
So, it's not like it's a change in the neighborhood at all, it's actually making the neigh, the actual use in the neighborhood conform to zoning.
I was, I was a bit swayed when the, the gas station suddenly became business, its own business, and the quote in, in the minutes were, according to the town planner's vision. So, that's the town planner's vision, to have that as a business, and I can't see why the vision wouldn't include the properties across the street, makes no sense otherwise. Because when I bought the home, I figured it out, well, it's slowly winding down as a business, because it can't sell gas anymore, and then it just went the other way, I was like, wow, that's the vision, okay. It was different, something different to me.
And, and as you can see, across the street, you've got the town-owned property.
Yep.
So, you know, we are not in a, in the heart of a residential district here.
But it's the border, I get it, it's the border of a residential district, I found myself right in the middle of it.
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
Through the chair, I know 79 is, is the dentist, the Pediatric Dental Associates, 81, is that a residence, is it a business?
It's our house, yeah, I mean, we, we've got another kid to finish raising, and then, you don't know what we're going to do with it, but selling it as a house doesn't really make a heck of a lot of sense.
When you have business on one side, business on the other side.
Oh, yeah, homeowners on the other side, business across streets.
Right. What's behind, just out of curiosity, my own personal curiosity.
Yeah.
This lot, one, what is that behind you?
Which lot? Right here. Oh, that belongs to Ervyn, and it's about an acre of nothing. And it's about an acre of nothing. It's, there's a little house in the corner.
Yeah.
And that's pretty much its backyard, and then just following the trees. It's a good buffer, I would think, to the neighborhood behind it.
Other questions, comments?
Well, I have a comment, um, because I live on Hayden Row, and this has been presented as being a budding business district. Actually, it's budding a residential district, an all-residential district, and basically almost all of Hayden Row is, is residential. This little area, and back down Hayden Row, is sort of the dividing line, we always considered the quiet end of Hayden Row. It's, over years, it's traditionally been called Little Hayden Row, and it, it appears and-
I'm sorry, Claire, where, where are you referring to?
From Ken, I'm dating myself, Kenny's service station, back down, from the lights on down.
On Hayden Row.
Is Little, Little Hayden Row, the quiet end of Hayden Row. This gentleman's home, which is what, A?
A-one.
A-one, appears in a lot of old photographs. That whole area, if you look at old Hockington photographs, is actually quite recognizable. It was called Loring's Corner. And Kenny's service station, I can understand, and it's now, I don't know, JB's or whatever. That has been in service station business use forever, just for years and years and years, I think going back to, probably, maybe the fifties or sixties or eighties. But the rest of it is residential. It goes into a lovely residential neighborhood, right behind Kenny's. When there was a house taken down there, other people bought that lot and saw fit to put up a very nice, brand-new home. They didn't see it as an undesirable residential neighborhood, and then two more doors down from that has been another very lovely new home erected.
Oh, you're, you're absolutely right. And then, a block down from that is a giant office complex with a, that's never finished renting out space for people. I mean, it's a mixed-
Across from that is Verizon.
Just another block down, and across from that's the Verizon CL station.
Oh, that's my home. That's my home.
It's a mixed, it's a mixed neighborhood, yeah.
I live next door to it, and there's no problem with living next to that building.
Right, exactly. So, it's kind of mixed in.
This is creep, this is business creep in residential neighborhoods.
Claire, can I just comment on that? Just, okay.
And, and so, I, I wouldn't approve of it, I wouldn't support it, because it is creeping down into a very-.
Can I, can I comment on that? I mean, here's, here's the zoning map, and the pink areas is already zoned business.
Right.
And here's the, the yellow areas here is a school.
This is school.
Okay? This, this area right here is a business property. It's the, it's the dentist office.
Yes, yes.
So, so, we, there is no creep down the street. The, the, I'm talking about the use. The use is already business, and, and therefore, this is not enlarging any business use on Hayden Row Street. It is just simply unifying the existing properties and properly zoning them.
Yeah, I've, I've had trouble trying to sell my lot for residential, because people don't want to build a house in between two businesses.
Well-
I'm, I'm sort of stuck in, like, I don't have neighbors, I know you do. I don't have any, like, I don't-
There are actually five businesses, five homes got rezoned on West Main Street, because those people claim there's no way they could sell their houses, and they're all these businesses that are gonna wanna come in. The date on the single house is turning into business. But to Mr. Davies' point, the dentist's office, I remember sitting on designer view board when the expansions of that building were undertaken, and they made specific effort to keep it in the residential style in recognition that they were part of a residential neighborhood. And a big difference when you change from what it is now to business, is that all of a sudden, there's a whole, um, host of business uses that are now allowed by right, right into residential neighborhood, right at the beginning of residential.
But Claire, that, that business use is already allowed in, in, that, that business use, I mean, I respectfully say this, I understand your point, and if the, if the business, if the business use were to creep down the street, then, then I can understand your concerns. But the use is not, the actual use of the property is a business use, and we're not suggesting that that be changed. All we're suggesting is that the, the actual uses conform to the, to the zoning district, and since the business use for the dental office has been granted by the town pursuant to a variance, and that, and the owners of that business use have that until the end of time, because that right now runs with the land. That is never gonna change, okay? So, um, you know, all we're doing is making that lot conform to zoning, which is an interest in, the town has an interest in, in doing that, in making sure the uses in the, and the, and the zoning district are in compliance with each other. So, I, I understand your, your comments, but I, I respectfully suggest to you that that's not what's happening here, and that's not what's suggested, okay?
The creep is contained by, um, a homeowner on one side, a business on the other side, the, the, um, gas station, and the dentist's office, and it will never go beyond that. We are just talking about creating ours and theirs to be all conforming with the business on either s, it's not gonna go any further than that. We're not talking about going further than seventy-nine, or further than eighty-three.
Yeah.
So, the creep, the creep is defined already, when you say creep, it's literally-
But there have been people that have been in here asking for one more, for, potentially for the South.
Well, Mr. Chairman, but that's irrelevant to this petition.
I know, I understand, absolutely.
You know, I, I, I'm here today with my client, who has a business use in a, in a residential zone, and that's just simply not, not right for, for zoning. That's not in the best interest of the town to have that continue.
Well, I think the point that the neighborhood needs to be aware of is there's a whole list of uses that are by right uses, what becomes business. So, once that happens, their neighborhood is subject to any of these by-right business uses, as opposed to something that is a special permit or variance.
That's true.
It, it hope, opens up a host of things that may not make good neighbors, and you do have-
Well, that's the, that's-
Sheriff's residents, all of them. So, I'm not, I'm not here to argue with, with Wayne back and forth.
I know, but Claire, that's, that's the job of a planning board under site plan review.
Sure.
All right, that's the, that's the job of a planning board under site plan review.
Are there, are there other comments people that want to make on this? You're here for something else? Okay. Whatever. Okay.
So, do I, is there any other feedback that I can, we can-
Does anyone else have anything that you want, John?
I'm concerned, um, open but concerned, because there's one thing, having a medical practice office, and there's another thing saying, we're now gonna open up, and if you look at some of the items, it can be a restaurant, it can be a bank, it can be a retail store. So, it's nice to argue it's commercial and business already, but it's a, it's dentist office, which is very different from-
A very busy, twenty-five parking spot dentist office.
Right, but it's different than, if, if I was across from a dentist's office, I'd have a different feeling than being across from a ninety-nine.
I understand, but living right in the middle of that?
Right.
A hundred yards away from me is homeowners, and the three families that are both zoned business-
I understand that.
That could both turn into a bank or a restaurant or anything else.
I share Claire's-
Can, can, are you aware that this property was, was at one point a real estate office?
Yes, but then again, that's different from a restaurant, a bank, et cetera. So, I'm, I'm staying the concern that I have, I'm saying, I'm open to discuss it, but I share Claire's.
Okay. And, and I think that, that should there be a change of use, and, and that is highly likely, okay? It's not, we're not gonna have a dentist office until the end of time, all right? At some point, you know, my, my client is going to retire, or, or, or move on, so we speak, okay? And, and the new owner of that property, if they're not a dentist, they're gonna come into the, to the town and requesting to get changed to some other type of office, but the, the, the building that it's in is not going to revert to residential again.
Sure.
Okay? It's in a, it's in a, it's in a business district, and it's in the best interest of the town to allow that business to flourish. Now, with respect to the concerns that you have, those concerns should be addressed by this board under site plan review, and that's why you have site plan review, to whether or not the, the, the use is objectionable to the, um, to the neighborhood, is what you do under site plan review. But, but you should allow the owners of the property the flexibility to be able to manage their current business use. I mean, right now, they must go back to the Board of Appeals if they were to make any changes in that business use whatsoever, and they have been before the Board of Appeals several times, and it's outlined in my letter, all right? That is just simply a, a constraint on business, and we're a business-friendly town here in Hockington.
Excuse me. I understand we're a business-friendly town, we also support our neighborhoods, and the fact that they have to return to boards is put there as protection to the neighbors around it. And the concern is, when something becomes by right, all bets are off, and by the time you get to site plan review, if it's something that is a by-right use, this board has very limited ability to make significant changes if it is now zoned and is by right. And I'm concerned about protection of the residential neighborhood, and we're not here to argue, we really are here to give feedback, and that's my feedback.
Okay. Frank?
I, I see it the same way Claire does. I, I think that by variance, we've allowed some things to develop, and maybe in hindsight, we make different decisions, but it shouldn't justify changing zoning and allowing the creep that Claire's talking about.
There are checks and balances in place, and I think, Mr. Chairman, that's part of what the Appeals Board does, and I'm certain.
Yeah?
I'm not as objectionable to this plan, and to me, it looks like it's aligning with that, uh, you know, that area in town. Personally, I'd, I'd be okay with, you know, moving forward and, and hearing this, you know, proposal further.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, to me, I would say it, it really just completes the business district. I mean, you've got a business district here, you've got a section of a business district right across the street, it is a business. It, it just makes it whole.
Okay. From my standpoint, I just, I'd love to hear what the people here in the Zach process, 'cause I respect that, and hear what the neighbors all have to say, and see where it's at, and, like I said, oh, oh, go ahead. Name and address, name and address, please.
Diane Caneverless, and we're probably twenty-sixth Hayden Row Street, and I, you know, we want to see that protected as residential, and, um, you know, part of the problem is we're on the other side of town, and we're finding that to become common right now, which, you know, farmers' parking, that sort of thing, and it's kind of crowding off some of the residents, so if it's happening on both sides, then, um, unless, I mean, it's, it's a disaster for my property. So, I'm, I feel, I'd like, I'd love to have neighbors, you know, to maintain what they're doing now, like I would want to set ancient precedents where we continue to approach unresidentiality and ultimately hardship for the system neighbors.
Anyone else? I guess you got kind of a mixed feedback.
I, I do. We've got some feedback. Now, um, when is that meeting again?
Well, Zach, Zach will be reappointed in September time period, and a second meeting, they will have a public hearing where they ask for proposals from everyone.
Okay.
Uh, and I encourage you to be part of that process.
Who is the current chairman of Zach?
John Coutinho, it's current, current chair.
He's currently the chair?
Right.
Would it be, um, not inappropriate if I would contact the current chair and ask to be placed on the agenda?
That'd be, that'd be fine, that'd be fine. And we're gonna reappoint, probably, maybe at our next meeting, I'm not sure.
I know she reached out and asked for the nomination on James, so, for a reason.
So, we're looking to start up, September, we understand this one, and maybe one other one will be early on, if it's a citizen petition. If not, their, their schedule is, is toward a May, normal thing. But if it's a citizen petition, then we respond.
All right. Well, I appreciate the comments, and it certainly gives us, um, some food to thought and, and gives us a feel of, of what the concerns are of the board, and I appreciate it, because that was the purposes of us coming in here and, and meeting with you tonight.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we've got two other ones, and then we've got a good shot of getting out of here almost an hour early. The master plan update was distributed, a economic development section, I believe, Fran, Fran and Frank were part of that, and at this point, I think it's up to each, that was the last section, segment, so it's up to all of us to shoot, to get some comments back over the next six weeks or so. Okay. Uh, and then we'll start taking them up quickly and, you know, use the resources that we have.
I think Elaine suggested at your September twenty-eighth meeting to have like a discussion on your full draft.
Okay. So, that, that'll kind of push us towards that.
And that's for the economic development, correct?
All, all of them.
Very nice.
And we'll see where we at are on all the ones, and maybe we'll limit the discussion to those that are more ready than others. But let's try to, try to kind of, try and work to get that. We're prob, next meeting is gonna be a very busy meeting. I think we've got the solar folks, we've got an Ash Street tree for the sidewalk hearing, we've got an awful lot going on.
Library.
In the library, too. So, I mean, it is, it's got ten pounds of stuff in that meeting already, and we're not gonna add anything more to it that I know of. Uh, you know, I guess we gotta talk about the Center for the Arts for five minutes or two, so, okay. Last item that I have is, uh, small subdivisions, and Elaine put together kind of a discussion basis, but I thought it was really interesting for, not the senior member of this board, but been here more longer than most people, other than Claire, I guess, to see the Larry Faiman memo that, that was talking about dead-end streets. I believe this was probably written at the time when we got sued, we, meaning the planning board, before I was on it, got sued for turning down a dead-end street in, on Cranberry Cove.
And now?
Robert Clark, Mrs. Developer, Bob Clark. And so, they put through probably an exhaustive discussion of looking at all of our aspects of, of dead-end streets. Elaine updated it with some of the more recent ones, and what I found was interesting on this one was, we did have more consistency, I think, in this, where we're at, but I think our discussion that we had, starting with last meeting, where we talked about the one off of Ash Street as a small dead end, what ends up being exceptional circumstances? And that, do we need to expand on that, or change? You know, that's what the whole discussion item is tonight, as to whether or not we defined exceptional circumstances, or maybe we, if somebody comes in and says, what do you think, or you even come to us, we hand them this, this long list of what we have and haven't done, maybe we don't like in today's some of the stuff- done, maybe we don't like in today's, some of the stuff that was happening in 87 and things like that. Uh, you know, it, uh...
Well, one thing that's pretty constant is that they have maintained the prohibition and only allowed it where they could pinpoint an exceptional circumstance. The exceptional circumstances have changed with the individual needs and the peculiarities of the particular site, but I didn't really see any instances where it was not permitted without there being an identified exceptional circumstance. They've been quite consistent for almost, what, 20 years?
Yeah. I think there was only one that we didn't do-
They couldn't clear, weren't clear what it was.
Yeah. I'm trying to, oh, the Deadstone one was not, was, I think, the only one that didn't come up with some reason why.
That's almost more a common driveway. It's just like-
No, but it had to be. But that, but, you know, that's the type of, is, you know, is what's, what we're going to be facing a lot more of is, you know, there are no larger, huge, or as many huge tracts of land where, you know, people, what do, what do I do if I got four acres? That's, that's the real question before the board here. You know, I got four acres, and I got frontage for one house, or one house and 40 feet, or something like that. What do I do?
Situation from last meeting?
Yes.
Exactly.
And that one, the, we found that there was some exceptional circumstances that there was a tract of land that worked for trails and stuff. And whether that was a great one or not-
Exceptional.
You know, it was, there was some value, let me put it that way. When it was, I, I characterize it as a good, good thing, but not a great value. I mean, that, I mean, but, you know, that's, that's a judgment thing, I guess.
But there was the town meeting article, I don't know how many years back it was, I'm going to guess it might have been 15, 20 years. You probably remember this, Ken, I don't know about anybody else. They called it the back lot article to try to create a mechanism for accessing back land. And people were vehemently against it. It went down in flames, and people wanted to not develop every single remaining scrap of land. And, you know, so I think what we've been doing so far is probably consistent with at least the will that townspeople has expressed through that article, even though it was a long time ago.
Yeah.
I, I agree with that. I think one of the things that I've heard from people is that, knowing that development is going to continue, we're not being careful enough protecting the character of the town. And I think if now you're starting to, in a freer manner, permit changes and greater development in existing areas because the land's there, that's only going to exacerbate the situation. And it's not like suddenly, oh, the, I would assume in most key cases, people bought the parcels knowing what the situation was. So, to create a development opportunity in residential areas that weren't there before, I don't think it necessarily serves a purpose, except for the person who owns that property. And I know where we've allowed development deeper in, there have been concerns of neighbors, et cetera. So, I think we've got to be very careful in turning down that path.
You know, the interesting thing, as we've been looking over this list of denials, an awful lot of those are recognizable as developments that eventually did go in. They found a way. When we, you know, held up the prohibition on dead-end streets, they found different ways to modify it so that they could get something in. So, it, it wasn't as insurmountable in the long run.
It's, I, well, I think a lot of them would have been, they might have had two or three more lots, you know? I mean-
Cranberry Cove, I think they made a loop, Wescott.
Well, it is a loop.
Yeah, but it was down here as a dead end at one point.
Well, I, I think, no, I think there was a, a dead end off of that to create a couple more lots, but I'm not, I'm not 100% sure because I don't, I don't remember back that distance. Was not a member of the planning board back then either.
I just think that they found a different way to make it work.
Well, they obviously made it work because it, it did. I, I think our, our preference for, I'll say, the larger lots with the open space type stuff makes it better. So, this, this pushes people into that type of mode. And, but I think, I think this is good that we have it in front of, so we have at least a basis for exceptional circumstances. I almost wish we had had kind of this discussion and this research before we talked to everyone, you know, last week, but, I mean, just because, you know, I think, I will admit, I learned a lot reading through that, which, you know, I remember most of the ones that are in Elaine's addendum to that because I sat through most of those. But it, it-
Somehow reading through this, it stilled my resolve to continue to be consistent. I didn't see any clear message for why we should suddenly go off the rails when you see, you know, a pretty, pretty steady record of consistency over 20 years.
Well, I, you know, the, the real question that I have is, you know, what, what exactly, you know, did, did we need to define exceptional circumstances better than what we currently do? And maybe, having looked at the record, maybe we don't. I don't know. I, I, you know, that's kind of the discussion point for everyone to weigh in on. I mean, we have the discretion right now, and I don't think we, I don't think anyone's accused of abusing it from a board standpoint. I know there's several of these small cul-de-sac dead ends that Elaine and I have met with, with people, and, you know, both of us kind of turned to them at the end of the discussions, and I don't see any exceptional circumstances for the town. And they kind of went away. I mean, you know, for example, dividing it into two or three lots with this and then giving the town the swamp that's in the back, you know, and, and, you know, if it's a half acre or an acre in a swamp, who cares? I mean-
Not valued.
There's no value, there's no exception.
I mean, I think a helpful rule of thumb is to be able to have a defined value back to the town. I don't think you've got to say lock and stone, but going forward, use that as a litmus test.
Maybe, maybe we need to change our rules and regulations to the point where we have to find, well, we kind of do find for exceptional circumstances, but we have to find and list the value.
To find that out.
No.
I mean, maybe you don't want to make an exclusive list, you know, to rule out some unique circumstance. A lot of them had environmental concerns that, you know, was better for the land.
I mean, there may be some of that.
Water resources or property.
Here's examples of value.
Yeah.
Just the listing as an example, by no means is inclusive of everything.
Yeah, it's not.
But direction schools.
You know, for, for example, there's, there's one that's going to come, I think, before us, and I'm surprised it hasn't already. There's an approved subdivision just to the east of the Irvine-Todaro sites. It's, why am I forgetting the name of the road there? Fitch, I think. I think it's Fitch Road, and there's a couple of little sites. Well, this was approved by the board in the early 90s, mid 90s anyway. And they're finding that the road, the wetlands have gotten worse, and in the middle of the loop road that's there is probably not buildable under today's standards. So, they're talking about making two small dead ends into that, which, you know, given that it's something that's already approved, maybe, you know, maybe there'll be a gift of some land that abuts our new area. I mean, but I haven't seen that, and I, I wasn't the one that talked to him. Elaine had talked to him at one point. So, anyway, that, that may be their, I'm not seeing a lot of discussion per se, so I guess people are comfortable with where we're at, pretty much. Maybe we kind of let it sit, and maybe if we're revising our rules and regulations, we maybe add some more clarity to that area a little bit.
Yeah.
You know, procedurally, maybe a person going for that has got to really think about that, what's exceptional.
I mean, looking at Larry Famon's letter, if I had felt that these examples were all over the map, I felt a strong need to, you know, set down some guidelines, but the fact that it's been pretty consistent and, and there's a pretty clear pattern makes me feel that, you know, if you want to articulate things a little better, maybe we could, but I think we've done a pretty good job over the last 20 years considering, you know, the undergrowth and changes in the board.
Particularly, it's always difficult, I'll say, passing history on from folks to, you know, to corporate knowledge.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, while we close out that discussion, if there's any liaison reports, anyone who has any of those, if anyone has future agenda items, please just let me know, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Yeah. I don't know why we want to put this on the agenda, but just a heads up, I think I'll work with Elaine on it, that Deerfield Estates down on Lumber Street with Capital Group, I thought they'd finished the development, but we still have the bond for it, and they've returned a lot of, they've been turning things over to the homeowners association now. And back in 2005, I guess, they configured a lot to save from the Franklin Sanger House, which was almost a 300-year-old historic home in Hoppington. And the historical commission's been approached by the homeowners association about the condition of the house. There's CPC funds this year to try and start to do some things to stabilize it. But I went back and looked, and there is an extensive landscaping plan that Capital Group agreed to do on that house, which would make a big difference in its appearance from the street, its appearance to the homeowners in the Deerfield Estates. Part of it, they, on the plan, it looked like there would be landscaping in the back, and what you couldn't see from the landscaping plan was the topography that where there's supposed to be landscaping, there's a 20-foot cliff. And they made the back door of the house so that if someone walks out the back door, they will literally fall off a cliff. So, we need to probably have a discussion with them, perhaps discuss using some of the bond money to finish this landscaping and, and put fencing and shrubbery and things so that it is, it is not a hazard to people going around the property. And anything that the town does with the property, those safety issues need to be addressed, so.
Okay, let's work with Elaine and-
Work with Elaine and the historical commission. We want to talk about when's a good. I think that probably bringing it to the planning board with them would carry more weight because we hold a performance bond than the historical commission just making noise.
Okay.
But it is a danger, and it's, it's a liability, so.
Okay. Thank you for pointing it out, Claire.
I really fell off the clip twice, right?
Okay. Anyone else got anything else they want to talk about? Look for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Anyone that wants to stay, say no. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone that wants to stay, say no. Ayes have it.